We have a very, very large crowd for tonight's meeting and we're very thankful for all of you being here. For the town hall with DDS Commissioner Jordan Sheff. Just a couple of ground rules for how the evening is going to be due to the size of this meeting. We're expecting hundreds and hundreds of people. All the participants will be muted and the chat function will be disabled. On the email that Shannon sent you with the link to this meeting, there's an email address that you can use to submit follow-up questions. Those questions can be submitted up until three o'clock tomorrow afternoon. DDS will answer the questions based on the general themes and those answers will be posted on their website. And the Art Connecticut will also email those answers in bulk to all the participants tonight on tonight's call. Also on the email that Shannon sent everybody is a registration for our next upcoming presentation, which is planning for the future for your loved one with special needs. It features Stuart Hawkins from Futures Plan and Colleen Massey from Sevega Pope Daily and Perry. And that's going to be June 23rd from six at six o'clock and there's a registration link there. So we're very fortunate tonight to have DDS Commissioner Sheff with me, with us. And I think it's really commendable that a commissioner not only has the leadership and communication skills to talk to hundreds of people at the same time, but also has the openness to want to do it. So without any further delay, Commissioner, the floor is yours and thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me, Winn and Arc CT and hello to all the many families. Some, as people are coming into the room, I recognize the name or two, but I'm sure there's plenty of you. I wouldn't recognize necessarily by name. And what an unusual time to be together. I would really love this to be about something else. But we're not, we're not quite ready to talk about something else because we're still talking about COVID-19. It's been a very long 90 days for everybody. I'm certainly for, I'm certain for families. It's been a very long 90 days. I think it's 92 now. And, but certainly my staff as well. And before I forget, there's a few of them on the line who I won't call out by name because they'll be mad at me. But we as an organization have been working pretty much seven days a week since the first week of March, doing what we can to keep as many people happy and healthy and safe as is possible under incredibly trying circumstances. And we're beginning to unpack some of that and I'll get to that a little bit later. We took some very swift action, even just ahead of governors. Executive orders about closing things down. My deputy commissioner, Peter Mason and I and the rest of the team were following data and trends originally in Europe. When COVID set foot into Seattle, Washington, I was in contact with their DDS staff within days. And our, the commissioner in California is a little less accessible. She supports a ton of people. But some of her staff, as they also had some, they were ground zero for a moment or two and then New York happened. And as the governor said, when, when New York catches a cold, when New York sneezes, Connecticut catches a cold. And that's, that's kind of where we found ourselves. So even though we were a little behind, I had a meeting with one of the epidemiologists at DPH and he looked me in the eye and said, this may not be as bad as 1918, but it's definitely going to be the worst thing since. And if we don't do it, well, it could be worse. What we knew early on from our friends in Washington, California, and then my colleagues in New York, New Jersey, is that individuals, there are a number of risk factors. Some of them you're very aware of. Age, underlying medical conditions, comorbidities. But some of the real deciding factors are density of people living together, congregate settings, how many people you have in one space? How many different people you have in one space? But there was a lot we didn't know. There remains a lot we don't know, but that made it all the scarier. How do you get it? How do you share it? How do you cure it? How can, can you get it a second time? And how do you prevent it? So we did all the things that we could to try and keep people safe. We were hopeful this was going to be a quick, a quick 30 days in and out. Everything's horrible. Everything gets better and it would be an awful 30 days. And here we are 90 days later, still not anywhere near normal. So I received a number of inquiries during the last 90 days from families, from providers, from advocates, from legislators, asking, at times asking, how are you making decisions? Why are you making decisions? So we, there's a couple of things that we do. We talked a lot about, we talked a lot about the data, the regular data, but our own data. And our data turned out okay in the end. We lost some lives, staff and people we support. We've had 28 individuals who are receiving supports from DDS who've passed in the last 90 days specifically to COVID. That may be understated because in the early days, there were some, there weren't enough test kits for some of the people who passed to confirm it was COVID positive. So when that number may come up a little bit. But as of today, roughly 4% of the people we support have contracted COVID. And 28 of those 300 people have passed. There's a couple of articles that were startling in the last few weeks. One was in Forbes magazine. The other was released by NPR earlier this week. That talked about the risk factors for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. In other states, the rates of mortality doubled that of the typical population. In New York and in Pennsylvania, as cited in the NPR article and in multiple states. But in the Forbes article, for a whole lot of reasons. We did better than that. Our mortality rate in Connecticut for IDD is about 9%. So that 28 out of the 300 works out to be about 9%. And that's the same as the rate for the rest of the other, the rest of the population outside of IDD. And it's much lower than the 16 and 14% that they were facing for mortality in Pennsylvania and in New York and a pretty high number in New Jersey as well. So as we're looking to emerge from that, we continue to track data. Very recently, we got to a point in our data where we had certainly crested and peaked and have leveled off. So just to give you some ideas, around the first of May, we cracked 250 people statewide. The additional 50 people I've mentioned earlier, evidently they cleaned the office at 6:10 in the evenings. We've added another additional 50 people over the last five weeks. So you can see how much growth there was in, in the outbreak early and how we've now leveled off with very new, few new cases reported by their staff or, or people we support. And we've been charting that. It's been published on our website. We've shared it with the legislature. We've shared it internally. And we have some graphs that we'll be sharing as well that make it a little easier to read than some of the data that's out there now. But that led us to believe that there was time to start doing, getting back towards, taking some, some chances to open some things. And I'm, I'm leery still while we begin to open things. It's a tough, it's a tough, fine line to walk because our primary charge is health and safety. And certainly outside of the physical health of people we support is the mental health. And being quarantined and isolated and separated from structured routine people for that period of time has a deleterious effect on one's mental health. And we certainly know that that's been part of it. Anecdotally, we have some people who've actually done better. As we've heard some from, from some providers, not having to get up and out the door and have multiple transitions through the day and being able to stay in one's home work for some of the people we support. And we'll be looking, going forward to see how we can make that work for them in a way that may make sure they have meaningful outcomes to their lives. So what is, what's going to change? Today we released some guidance. One was to our day providers across the state on a plan to reopen as early as middle of July. Depending on the provider and the plan, maybe even a little earlier, but we told them they needed to be ready for the middle of July. If you have a loved one that goes to day program, expect in the next few days and weeks that you'll be hearing about a team meeting to talk about what that means and what it may mean and where you are in the multiple phases of reopening. There are some things we never shut down. The governor says often, we didn't, we didn't completely shut down the state. We have people we support who are essential workers who maintain jobs through this, who lived independently and weren't quarantined, but were encouraged to stay home and stay safe. But we are now trying to reopen some of those other congregate settings and larger settings. So there's a lot that goes into that in the, in the plans for providers to comply with. They'll need to demonstrate that they have screening protocols for people coming and going from the building. They'll need to have the available PPE, which the state's been supplying, but they're going to need more now. They've only been operating residential programs. They'll be operating day programs. That'd be additional PPE. And we talked with our sources for that earlier today. One of the underlying challenges in our efforts to do this is that the guidance we receive, whether it's from the World Health Organization, the Center for Disease Control, FEMA, our own DPH, has shifted sometimes daily, sometimes a little more frequently than that. Get some guidance in the morning that isn't the same as at night. And so trying to make sure that we have the best guidance we can and consistent guidance has been a struggle. So some of the news on testing and some of the things that were recommended in the reopen CT plan won't be absolute requirements in terms of what's necessary for testing. But availability and access to testing for providers as they open is one of the things that we're trying to ensure. And then a concept that you've probably heard about in the news or social media, the ability to contact trace. So that as opposed to a complete shutdown of everything, when the numbers go up, we can try and localize it and only shut down where there's exposure and risk and not shut down everything globally. Now that the capacity for testing is available. Part of that planning is going to be requirement for flexibility, both for the individuals we support. If they can't tolerate a mask, whether you have sensory issues or whether you have respiratory issues, it's contraindicated for other health reasons. And then how would a provider mitigate the risks associated with someone returning to a day program and not wearing a mask? Some of our providers provide personal care during the course of the day. And there's concerns around potential spread using what we, I've learned to call in the last 90 days. I never said this phrase prior to March, but aerosolized treatments. So whether that's nebulizers or other oral tools for, for cleaning teeth that would create spray. And there'll need to be mitigation around that. Interesting in the feedback we've gotten over the last 90 days is different people are in very different places about reopening. While the preponderance of email my staff and I have replied to is about, we need access to these, these services. There's a fair number of people still who keep telling us, we're not ready for a risk. We don't need that. I don't want exposure. My kid's gonna, I'm just going to keep my kid home. I love one home. Because we're not ready to take on that risk and they'd like to not be first in the pool, so to speak. And so some of those conversations, all of those conversations will happen on an individual basis between the provider, case management, the family, the individual that's receiving support. So expect to hear more on employment and day coming up. If you're looking for that guidance, I'm sure the art will be pushing it out. If they haven't already, they're very helpful that way. If not, it's on our website under latest news, I believe, for that on day services. Some of the aspects of day are going to be complicated. If any of the families on the call tonight are homeless transition age youth who are waiting, counting the days until they are done with public school and expecting a transition to adult services. It's hard when there's no adult day programs open to transition to anything. We are, we still have a number of those transition age youth cases on our helpline, which can't do the work of an individualized case manager with a relatively small caseload. But there wasn't, until we started getting day providers open so they could have the capacity to take these things on. There wasn't really, we have so many other things we've been trying to do with our case managers that that hasn't been the focus. But if you, that we should, you should see more and hear more about transition in the new grads coming up. There are some, there are some providers who deal with, who support a pretty complex group of people who have reasons that they would be susceptible to contracting COVID. They're probably going to be very reluctant to take on new cases. We have other providers who are eager to get some things going and see this as an opportunity to start providing services in a non-center based way. And they're eager to show how flexible and nimble and agile they can be in providing those services. And then there's residential supports. And has the, you know, so around residential options, has the pandemic changed any of these options? I'll tell you that the pandemic has presented lots of opportunity. We didn't know we had previously. There was some reluctance as we began to roll out technology about two years ago that people have suddenly embraced. And they found it's helpful to them, their loved ones, their family. It cuts down on transitions, still provides resources. I expect that there will be some families who wish to include remote and technology-based solutions for their needs going forward. And that would include some of the residential things. I think that there are some people who are going to look at the numbers. You know, what we learned is if you can keep COVID out of the front door, you can keep everybody safe. But as soon as you have one person in a home or in a setting that gets it, it's really, really hard to clamp down. So when I talk about those 300 people who contracted COVID, there are hundreds, probably every bit of 800 group homes that did not have a single case for people we supported. And what that shows is that, you know, going back earlier, when I talked about what we saw in Europe and what we saw on the West Coast and then in New York and New Jersey, is that the density, how many people you have, it's, once it gets in the door, it spreads like wildfire. So we are, we're mindful of that. I'm not discouraging some of the traditional group home models we have in play now. But if COVID doesn't go away quickly, if there's not a vaccine or if there's another epidemic or pandemic, one of the things we know for sure is the more people you have in a space, the more likely it is for you to have an adverse outcome as a result. That that's a risk factor. So we'll, I think that's another part of the residential supports going forward. Not in the immediate future, but I think that's things that people are going to have to consider for their loved one when they're making choices. Whether smaller settings are better or individual settings with wraparound supports are better as opposed to the traditional group home model. There were some questions about both the waitlist and so I'll tackle that first. From March 2019 to March 2020, we took about 100 people off that, off of our waitlist despite everything else going on around us. Pardon me while I shuffle a couple of papers, but our, we had recalculated through a legislative effort. The way we kept the waitlist in the last day of March in 2019, we were at 1,978 people on the waitlist. And today we're at 18, or I'm sorry, not today. On March 31st of 2020, we were at 1889. Given that we have, it's been much more challenging to place people because of the risk factors. We have continued to place emergencies during the last 90 days. Maybe not at the rate we would have a year ago because of the risk factors around COVID. But we are doing that and we will continue to do that. There was a question, a number of people asked questions about the current aging caregiver protocol we use. While there was a specific number in mind with the original $8 million waitlist initiative about five, six, seven years ago. I've lost track. We have adjusted that based on our appropriation. Right now, I believe where we are most likely to entertain those requests, the cutoff is around 70 years old. We would love for that number to be lower and for people to be able to be more playful and, and start to make those changes while people are a little younger and a little more spry. And I say that as I get older every day and think, oh my goodness, how, how do families do it? We're very empathetic to that. We'll see what this next, what, what changes come from the secretary and the governor for the mid-year budget adjustments or any rescissions and holdbacks we may see as a result of the, the bad economic climate for the state awaiting some federal relief. But right now we continue to use the number of 70. It has been as high as 73. We were close to maybe lowering it just a little below 70 and then had some, some unexpected expenses come our way. With regards to public, so one of the things that has really aided our private provider community in their ability to provide remote supports and keep families connected is the fact that a lot of our providers have Wi-Fi in the homes. Our public programs don't have Wi-Fi because the state security people, the DAS best, hasn't previously allowed for it. We are in the process of trying to get that up and available for all of our public programs, including Southbury and the regional centers and the 30 or so remaining group homes that we have. Looking at the time, I'm looking at what I have left to share with you before I take some questions from Winn. So let me touch base really quickly. There were several documents released today. I mentioned the day employment services information that went out today. Something probably less important in terms of being, well, less important to most folks on the call today is renewing some of our fire safety inspection that we had moved to virtual and remote so that we could have live onsite inspectors to test some of the fire suppression equipment that's out there. They were, we were going to work with each of the service providers there that handle that to make sure we're doing it in the, in the safest way possible. And the third item today was on Camp Harkness. The camp will open Friday morning for the first time this year at about nine o'clock. There's information on our website. Over the next couple of weeks, we'll increase both the number of people who can attend as well as the hours of operation and the facilities that will be available. The one thing we do not know yet is whether overnight campsites is something we'll be able to support before summer's over. So certainly not in the next three weeks, but the team that's working at Harkness is evaluating that. One of the things I didn't mention in my early rambling that has prevented us from doing some of the things we would have otherwise liked to have done sooner is the fact that not only did COVID wreak havoc in terms of causing illness for people we support, but also for staff. We've had more than 100 staff out at any given time and we've had absenteeism related to COVID. At the height of things in the middle of April, we were experiencing absentee rates due to illness or COVID-related coverage for family or exposure or isolation. We got up to maybe 12 or 13%, which is higher than any of the things we've experienced with hurricanes, with snowstorms and blizzards and any other of the natural disasters. That was a really high number to absorb. And we are back down to around five and a quarter percent, five and a half percent. We typically run at four and a half percent. So given everything else going on around us, we're finally back to having resources necessary to allocate. And that's one of the reasons the camp isn't opening till now. Is because we didn't have the people to put on the grounds to keep everyone safe, to run the booth, to do all of those things. So let me talk for a little bit about the visitation ban. I sent out a memo last week and that more news will be coming. We had hoped to have it all out today, but we had so much else going out today. We were afraid it would be overwhelming, not just to families and advocates and legislators, but to our staff and to providers. So we're going to let them digest that for a day. The visitation information with the details on how that will work will be out before the end of the week. Maybe tomorrow, if not, then certainly Friday. And I think some of the questions I've had around visitation, the way the memo we put out on the fifth of June read, there were some people who felt that would only allow for visitation in privately run group homes. There, the guidance that will come out is going to allow providers to work with families and individuals supported as well as case management and figure out what will work and what the risks are. There's a risk assessment tool. There are some guiding documents on how that will work. And that the potential depending on the provider, the family, the individual, that, that other types of visitation would be allowed, not just at the group homes, but maybe at family homes. It's going to be on a case by case basis. And ultimately there are risk factors, both geographic and other health related things. This was really, really hard as an agency. This is the heart, as an individual and as an agency. 32 years I've talked about family and community integration being the, the, the heart of everything we do around making meaningful lives for people we support. Those are always at the forefront of what we're doing. And 90 days ago, they became the opposite of what we were advocating for. Don't go into the community. Don't see your family. Stay home. Be hidden, be isolated. It was really hard. Literally tears shed among myself and staff over having to make that decision. I think our data supports that, at least in terms of saving lives, it was probably a really good decision. As I said earlier, we're learning to unpack some of the trauma that comes about and how we'll support people who, as we reemerge and they reconnect with families and they reconnect with their community. And where there's a lot of healing that's going to have to come from that. And so we're mindful of that. We're working with some of our trauma-informed care clinicians as well as looking at some of the national guidance on that. But it's really, really hard. I entertained all sorts of questions around, well, have staff can come and go, why can't families? And there's a lot of reasons for that. If we, if staff get sick and they can't come, there's no one to run the group homes. And we've got their providers on the call today. We got really low. They were trying to figure out how to Band-Aid things together to keep essential operations going. And every time you add another person's pathology to that mix, you don't increase by one, the risk of exposure, you increase exponentially. The exposure, not just for your loved one who may enter into voluntarily a visitation with you, but all the other people they live with who may not have any interest in taking on the risks associated with your decision to see your loved one. So we went from a very person-centered approach. That's all I've preached and done my whole life to a very system-centered approach. And it has been hard. It's been hard on families. It's been hard on those we support. It's been hard for staff. It's broken the heart of some of my case managers who worked to do so much to connect families to those they love. And hopefully we'll start to see some of that. Now I temper all that with the notion that, you know, today's reports show that 20 states are on the rise since reopening, 19 or 20 states. Connecticut had another down day today and I'm grateful for that. We're not, I don't know if we're 14 days past Memorial Day, but we are certainly 20 days past the first reopen. We have another reopen phase coming up on the 20th. We'll be mindful of the data. We'll be mindful of the trends and hopefully we can localize it and shut down things in part as opposed to in whole. But all this guidance we're putting out now is with the caveat that it, we may have to, we may have to go backwards. And so we're hoping that as people experience some of this, some of this opportunity, that it will be refreshing that we are really good about our social distancing and we're really good about our use of masks where we can, that we're mindful of the fact that staff have shown up every day for as little as 1475 an hour through some of the most trying of times to continue to support your loved ones and give them as best a life they could, at times not feeling they had adequate protective equipment. And they've shown up in large numbers for, for all of that 90 days and have done that really, really well. So it's, it's a tough balancing act because without staff, there's not a lot of services to provide. So we're mindful of that as well. I'm coming up against the time I told when I take, there were a couple of other questions that were sort of general about the appendix K. The appendix K, which allows some of the freedoms to do some of the things that we did creatively is good until roughly March 10th of 2021. And we have an opportunity between now and then to look at whether or not they consider extensions, but to amend our existing waivers to incorporate some of the things that we think were valuable that became available in the, in the appendix K, to continue those in our, in the future of our service system. There were some questions about other people and are we tracking and are we not tracking? We have continued supports for people not living in congregate settings where they live in their own apartments or where they live in clusters or independently, a home of their own, CCHs. We have some of that data. But some of that is reliant on voluntary reporting. So even though our case managers are checking in, we're not gathering health records and we're not, you know, directly from the individuals. We will have a sense through Medicaid claims data, which runs behind the real world as to more numbers as time goes on. We're using some really interesting software to try and leverage Medicaid claims data. So we have a better picture of what our system looks like. And we already know that there are likely some individuals who got tested during that time that we didn't know were getting tested as people we would call, I think we call them person, person under investigation. It's a horrible phrase. I think we call them PUIs. That could be circulating that. And we could see some of that in the early days of the data that not everyone was reporting they were getting tested. We're beginning to see some of that Medicaid claiming data coming in now. And so I'm going to, I'm going to wrap there. I think I covered most of what I had hoped. This is all, we joke that we can't wait to go back to banging. We joke that we can't wait to go back to banging our heads against the wall about things other than COVID, but it's been ninety straight days of COVID. We would love to talk about something else. And I could certainly talk about COVID the rest of the night and not run out of things that we discovered or learned, but I want to give. Win the opportunity to ask some questions. And I want to thank everybody. It's amazing to me that you'd all take time out of your lives, given everything else going on to listen to me. And I hope that I was able to share some information you found helpful. Win?
Thank you, Commissioner, for sharing a lot this evening. A few questions. Let's. Let's start off with something that would be welcome relief for everybody on the phone call. Let's talk a little bit more about respite. Families have unused respite grant funds for the year. Will families lose this funding? Will it roll forward?
So let me talk about respite in a couple of flavors. So there are people who have respite built into individual budgets and those run on an annual cycle and utilization. So if people are coming up against the end of their year, I'm gonna, I'm gonna defer that question. If Peter will chime in in a minute. If he knows the answer to whether or not that gets rolled over or not. Some of the respite is paid for through our family grant money. Once that money is issued, there is some reporting and time requirements on that, but that's not on a fiscal year basis. So that's on, on the grant year that when you applied and when it rolls to. The one thing I'm a little more confident talking about, and I'll ask Peter and Christopher help on the other two items if they have it. Is with regards to our respite centers. So we, our respite centers, the publicly operated respite centers, there's ten of them around the state. We canceled them starting in March. We are not going to be quite ready to open them July first for a couple of reasons. One is there, all their staff have been redeployed into our other public programs because of the shortages of staff. But we'll begin to, we're, we're expecting to receive plans from our respite teams about how they could open, how many people could attend. So how many, how many staff and individuals can you have in the building safely at one time? And how will triage those requests? For respite. And we hope to have that out, news about that out in the next couple of weeks. We have a probably eight reopen committees with internally of things we're trying to get started again. And that is on that list. Peter, I'm sorry, I hate to put you on the spot. I forgot about this question. The answers on whether individual budget or grant as it relates to respite?
For individual budgets, if the fiscal year or your budget year ends, the money does not carry over. The grant money, I think you have more time with that. We'll have to go back for that, but I believe the grant money you do have time for that.
This is Krista, Peter. I actually have the answer to the grant funding, so I just wanted to chime in quickly. The grant funding, the family grant funding can be used through September thirtieth. So that decision was made recently. And has been communicated to the case managers and the families that have utilized the family grant funding.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you all for that. So. Obviously, you did a great job of talking about the dislocation that COVID nineteen brought to the department and. And explaining that. And as we all know, that there were individuals that were working in the community at the time and ended up losing. Their ability to work either through shelter in place or because they, the businesses that they were working in shut down. Are there benefits available for those individuals that have been unable to work due to COVID nineteen that they should be pursuing in order to make rent, et cetera?
Yes. So there's a couple of ways that benefits are available for, for individuals currently. So with specific regard to employment, we would encourage the individual, their service provider, their case manager to explore traditional unemployment benefits. Part of that's dependent on how you were employed. So there are some people who have jobs at regular businesses in the community, but they're through a contract through a provider. And that may not be eligible for claiming. But if they're paid directly on a, on a paycheck from an employer, say a. A Big Y or a Stop and Shop or a Home Depot or Yukon Medical. That, that would, they, they should, they should file that complaint, file that concern and they may get paid from that. There's also some of the other benefits that are available in the state, as well as some of the federal relief that came through. My understanding is there are some benefits that have already been passed on to individuals we support, whether that's through Medicaid or whether that's through other. Other entities that, that became available. There are some individuals whose employers took part of the PPP. About protecting payroll. And they may have gotten some benefit from that as well, but if they didn't and their other colleagues did, they should explore that.
Thank you. Most families are aware of the DDS hospital guidance that came out at the end of April, allowing a support person to accompany an individual in the DDS system to a hospital admission. But there were many concerns around why that guidance was not a mandate and why it was not expanded to other individuals with disabilities. You go into that a little bit?
Sure. So. We had some initial guidance that was available. We had not heard a lot of concerns at the time that it became a bigger issue with the public discourse. We had heard, Krista and I had heard from four, on four instances of people eligible for our services. And I understand fully. There's lots of different disabilities that aren't covered by us as an umbrella. And we were able to urge on and work with Connecticut Hospital Association and our partners at. Public Health to get some guidance around hospitals. And the community wasn't particularly thrilled. It was only for our individuals and not other disabilities, and it wasn't strongly worded. New Jersey and New York had put out some. Stronger, more formal guidance, although it was also short of an executive order. And we were challenged, I'm sorry, it was a complaint filed on behalf of at least one individual not eligible for the department with the Office of Civil Rights. And the Department of Health and Human Services. We were on the cusp of getting to something like that, but when the federal government offered their technical assistance in drafting that. It's the kind of offer you just say yes to. And so we did. And that prolonged for several weeks the negotiations between. Roger Severson, I just said his name Severino, Roger Severino and our attorneys at the AG's office. And there was a transition of public health commissioners during that time. When we began the process, Commissioner Coleman Mitchell was there. Those responsibilities were transitioned to Commissioner Gifford, who's also overseeing VSS. And that guidance came out this week and it covered, it's still not an executive order, but it's a pretty strongly worded document. That the feds hope to use as a model for guidance across the country during this type of thing and during resurgences like they're seeing in Arizona. We have been pretty, we have been pretty successful. The number of the hospital administrators have me on speed dial. So it's unusual for me to be calling them. I'm used to them calling me. But we were, we were calling them back and saying, hey, I've got a mom or a dad or a sister or a brother. And can, can you help us here? I think there was a disconnect between hospital administration and the people working the front doors at the ER. The guidance to the ER staff working admissions was keep everybody out that you can, right? Because numbers and density, I'll keep going back to numbers and density. As few people in the building as possible, will you mitigate risks? So the fact that people were expecting to be accompanied by an aide, a support staff person or a family that the executives had agreed to in our original language. Didn't seem to always trickle down to frontline emergency room workers who were doing their best to keep people in the ER safe.
Thank you. Going back to sort of day and employment. If. Families feel that their loved one is medically fragile or. Or unable to attend day program, will DDS continue to attempt to support people in their homes? During daytime hours so that parents can go back to work kind of thing if they're able to?
So, yes and no. So first, what I'll say is, is providers in the plan. The, the documentation that went out today are being encouraged to not only reopen centers, but continue any of the remote supports they've been doing. And being able to get paid and take credit for that. And that'll work for some families and some individuals and that won't work for others. What we haven't gotten to yet is for those people, as you suggested, who are not ready to take those risks, we certainly don't have all the money. That we would need to give everybody thirty hours a week of in-home support, one-on-one. It would break the system until there was that kind of money available. But there may be opportunities for us to look at doing that in other creative ways. Whether that's a smaller number of one-to-one hours, that taking their annualized allocation and asking a provider to. Instead of supporting them thirty hours a week in a building, could you use that same amount of money to support them X number of hours face to face in their home? We, we haven't gotten that far with what that will look like. There are some. Concerns that providers will have about that. There may be concerns that the federal government will have about that unless you can show people are having. Meaningful days integrated in their community, although I think they will be less likely to consider enforcement on those issues now than they would have a year ago. So we don't have, we, we're thinking about that. As I said earlier, we have families who are not ready to have visitation where their loved ones live. Where they are not ready to have people go back out into the community. You know, we have had, some of our providers are particularly skilled at supporting medically fragile individuals. And asking people who have ongoing respiratory issues, recurring pneumonias. Immune, immunodeficiency disorders to leave their house and go to a day program in the worst days of August or the worst days of March weather-wise. Is contraindicated for their, their overall health outcome. I, I think that we have learned that we were already doing some of that structured program at home for some individuals, but I think we need how to learn to do that more because I don't know that being. All together, all the time is best for everybody. And I think certainly some families have arrived at that conclusion on their own.
As day and employment begins to get ramped up. Will there be a phased process that has to do with possibly prioritizing? Some people rather than other people and then some kind of programs rather than other kinds of programs?
Yeah, so we did, we had some of our leadership internally hold some. We posted a survey. We posted surveys in the past for families and others. We've never had more than two or three hundred responses. We had somewhere in the neighborhood of eighteen hundred to two thousand responses to this. People are ready to share with us. And so we, we were listening. And we also included providers. There are going to be a variety of alternatives that providers might come up with. So some of the limitations are on physical space. And if your building doesn't allow for six, let's say you have a program and fifty people are used to coming. But there's no way to manage six-foot distances between people and keep everybody safe with fifty, but you could do it with twenty-five. Both the department and the providers and the families may have to look at whether we do staggered schedules or rotation of days on and days off. Or look to figure out how to increase the square footage of a space or otherwise modify the building to create that opportunity. Or a blend of in-person and remote supports to get your, your regular work week done or individualized off-site supports combined with typical. What we call DSO or GSE, day service options or group supported employment. So I think it's a whole new world. We want to carry forward what worked well. You know, this is not ideal. The, this, it would be much easier for us to have a horrific hurricane that went away and then we just rebuilt some stuff and went back to normal. I, I take, I take a horrible hurricane season with four of those the summer versus the last ninety days and the fact that. I think the hardest thing is I talk to people I support that we support that are your loved ones. The not knowing is the hardest part, right? There's no end to this. There's no, you know, you know, a snowstorm is going to come to an end. You know that the water is going to recede. Nothing in the news tells you that we're all better and ready to go forward and we can put this behind us. In fact, the news reminds us that we're really not there. And that we're taking risks as we're trying to resume some level of normal. So we'll be guarded, we'll be creative. We had some providers do some amazingly creative things and I've heard from those families how thrilled they were. We had some other providers who said that we're not really getting what we need or. My son, my daughter doesn't benefit from the types of things they're offering. They won't, they won't engage with screen or phone. They're, they, they, it's just not, it's not a meaningful activity for them. And so there are a lot of people, while providers did their very best, while we encouraged them to be really creative. There are some people for whom this isn't going to work. So in terms of priorities. I think essential workers who need to get back to work or whose companies are coming back online and need to return to work. Would be individuals, providers may look to prioritize in their decision-making in the plan they come up with. They may decide that people who have a higher level of fragility aren't going to be the first priority because they're going to take the most risk. And wouldn't want to be the first and you, you test drive things with. So that's in the guidance, how you triage that, what you may consider, who's a low risk, who's a medium risk, who's a high risk? Where are your rewards in that? What are people benefiting from? Are they just going to day program for a change of scenery or is there a more meaningful outcome they're going to get by going there versus what they could get at home?
And I guess the last question is meant to help out a lot of families do sort of their own planning. Is. Are, is the state likely to be following the guidance of CDC and the federal authorities to, to the greatest degree? And especially around transportation?
Yeah, transportation. So I've mentioned for thirty-two years, I've been trying to champion person-centered planning and family involvement. The bane of my existence for thirty-two years has been transportation. When you talk to our self-advocates, they tell you there's only three things they need. A place to live, a place to work and a way to get back and forth, right? So transportation is forever part of the conversation. If you have individuals who can't put a mask on or who won't glove up, putting five people who can't do that in a van is no longer a good solution. What we do know, though, what we're learning is that a, a car that's been used by somebody else after three hours of sunshine. Is by, I think it was three hours. One of the epidemiologists at DPH said. Windows up in the summertime, that virus is gone on a sunny day in less than a couple hours just by being left alone in the vehicle. The contact surface issue is, is not as big a deal. It's different in cloudy days and colder weather. And that's not really the way a provider is going to want to figure out the transportation schedule is based on weather, but there are some. It may not be as risky. And I say that knowing that the state lost bus drivers and taxi drivers and Uber drivers to exposure. Whether it was contracted while doing their job or not is a little harder to say. But so that's, that's a tough analysis. People who are used to get, were used to getting rides may need to look to see if their loved ones can get them there. Maybe we need to look at some specialized Uber services with extra levels of screening. They're dedicated to the cause. Only one person's in a vehicle at a time. When you're transporting a group home, it's a little different. If those five people live together and those two drivers. Or the staff attendant and the driver have been working together for ninety days, they basically are sharing a pathology already. I don't think that there's an inherent risk in a group home. All five people getting in a vehicle, all five people going to the same place the same way there is. If, if, you know, you're an agency that goes and does a thirty-five mile loop and picks up four different people on that thirty-five mile loop and brings them to a center. That's a different set of risk factors. And I think that's going to be a real challenge and we're going to look for a lot of creativity, flexibility. Resources to try and make that work. But there's. We were, I was on, I had the opportunity, I belong to a thing called NASDYS, the North American. Developmental Disability Directors States. It's NASDYS. I'll just go with NASDYS. I should know it. I'm, I'm their secretary, but everything just says NASDYS on it. We met on our virtual conference last week. And it was all by Teams and WebEx and things like that. I went there hoping that they were going to have these. These crystallized, perfect, beautiful tools to help me reopen Connecticut. And we would follow in the footsteps of people who. Blaze trails in front of us and in particular on this issue of transportation. There was none of that. We're all in this together, you know. I talked about California. California closed two weeks before us. They have not reopened and they're working on guidance. We will be. We will have closed later and reopened earlier. When I tell you I do this with some trepidation. I, I have, I have concerns. I think there are risks, but I think they have to be balanced based on what we know about the trauma effect for people who've been isolated. and kept home so long. And we have to follow our own data. California has not seen the fall off. They've kept it low and steady the whole time. But they've not ever seen a peak and they've not ever seen the valley that follows the peak. Connecticut's in a little bit different shape, especially as you move from west to east across the state. East of the river is significantly less risk than Hartford, Waterbury, Danbury, Stanford, Trumbull in those areas. So there's, you know, geograp- what we were encouraged to look at as we're doing a lot of this, and I don't know how to get at this, but the the transmission rate by geography is one of the things that if we had the tools that we would know like by zip code, we're the highest and lowest transmission rates. And I think Commissioner Gifford is close to having that ready for us at DPH. But that's a really hard number to get to, particularly when you haven't tested everybody. You know, you're working on numbers that say the transmission rate based on who you know has been tested. And everyone out there should know that you can get tested now pretty much anytime you want. And if you, as a person with intellectual disability, you fall into one of the vulnerable categories, you call your primary, you can get a test. And you care for somebody with an intellectual disability, you tell that to your doctor, you can get a test. That's, that's how it's been relayed to me. So if you're curious about where you are in your health and you're thinking that there's still not access to testing, there's a number of testing opportunities now that weren't available even in the last 10 days. They weren't available, but they are now. Did I answer that question? I know I meant to. It's been a long day, Winn. Did I hit that right or do you want to reframe that?
No, I was, I was trying to tease out whether as the state opens up, whether families should be traveling with PPE and doing everything that they can.
So I'll be really clear. There was some, following a press conference around the Phase 1 reopening, my kids came into my room. My daughters are, one will be 16 in nine days, the other is 18 and the other is 20, going to be 22 soon. They came rushing in, having watched my boss talk on the air. I was still on a Teams call doing other things and they said, we can do sleepovers again, Dad. We can have a pool party and a sleepover because we can have 10 people inside for an activity. And I said, no, you still need to have six feet between each of you and you have to have your PPE on. Unless you're ready to sleep with a mask on six feet away from sign. I don't, I don't have that kind of real estate where I could get 10 kids to sleep six feet apart. And they said, no, no, I heard the governor say that. So I actually talked to Commissioner Jabal from DAS and the governor COO and all of this guidance, all of this guidance presumes that people will utilize PPE to the best of their ability. And we know that that's not possible for everyone. And that they'll maintain safe distancing. And I know that's going to be really hard in the visitation policy. All right, that's going to be hard. And there's probably going to be some times during that where there's less than six feet. People will be overcome by emotion and there's going to be people watching and trying to keep that. There's a human element there that we'll be mindful of. But we also be mindful of the less we practice that discipline, the more likely we will be to have to shut things down again. And as I told you, it's been the most important decisions I've made in my life, but I think they were in the best interests of everybody. The greater community as well, not just our community, but the community of Connecticut. Keeping in mind, we represent roughly 26,000 direct care employees across the state and around 17,000 people eligible when we're fully operational, 13,000 people getting a service every day. So if 40,000 people are intermingling and circulating around the state and we're, and there's some contagion out there, we're not only internalizing and getting it, we have the potential to spread it to you, to you when they get home to your house. When they go to Stop &amp; Shop, when they see their friends, when they're on the bus. So yeah, all of that is with the mindset that we would maintain all that or we'll be right back to where we were when I sent out those horrible letters on March nights.
Okay. Well, we're just about at closing time. So I thank you very much for what you've shared with us tonight and the insight that you've given into the direction that we're going. Thank you very much. For members of the audience, I want to reiterate, you can follow up this session with follow-up questions by going to the link that's on the on the email that Shannon sent earlier today. And I thank everybody for their participation and thank you for submitting the questions earlier, everybody. It really helped. With that, I'm going to say goodnight and everybody stay healthy.
Thank you, ArcCT, for having us.
Thank you.